Good evening and thank you for being here this evening. This is the Tuesday, April 19th, regular school board meeting. So we're calling the meeting to order and it is my pleasure to welcome our two newest board members this evening, Dr. Alina Leonard and Dr. Charles Taylor. All right, this is their first regular board meeting. So Mrs. Luton, please let the record show that all board members are present this evening. And at this time, I'd like to invite Trisha Bloodsoe to come to the podium and introduce our special speakers.
Thank you, Dr. Frederick. Tonight, I'm especially excited to introduce you to the students who will be leading the pledge. This will be a unique experience because one student will recite the pledge and the second student will use sign language. So I would like to introduce Holland Elementary students, Jada Lowry and Melina Carnelison. Girls, if you want to come forward. They are both fifth graders at Holland and they're accompanied tonight by their principal, Gary Too. Jada, whose parents are Victor and Leslie Lowry, is a student leader involved in Kids' League Club and Honor Choir. And because she is such an outstanding leader, the street sign outside of the school has her name on it. Melina, whose parents are Johnny and Shannon Carnelison, is involved in orchestra and she demonstrates her outstanding leadership by modeling the Holland pride behaviors. So at this time, I would ask that you rise and join us as Jada recites the pledge and Melina signs the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did anyone of you guys say you can cry through that?
Okay.
Here we go.
We're already crying.
Thank you very much.
This evening, we also have a lot of exciting, outstanding accomplishments to celebrate for both our students and our staff. In April, we typically commemorate Earth Day and Arbor Day, so our first two recognitions are especially timely. First, I would like to welcome Hickory Hills Elementary School fifth grader Ian Williams. Ian, if you'd come forward. Ian's artistic talents have resulted in him winning the 2015 Missouri Arbor Day poster Fifth graders from throughout the state created posters and Ian's was chosen because he best depicted the theme Trees Work for Wildlife and People. He was recognized this spring at the Missouri Community Forestry Council State Conference and in honor of his accomplishment, a tree was donated and planted on the Hickory Hills campus in honor of his achievement. So we congratulate Ian this evening.
Just a second, Mrs. Bloodsoe. When where can we go to see his picture?
We'll tweet out a link to it. It's on the district website.
District website and there's a link so we can see his picture.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Now, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Blaine Radford, who is our grounds maintenance supervisor. He and his team shoulder the task of maintaining about 3,000 trees on 66 properties throughout the district, which covers about 600 acres, 650 acres of green space. So they shoulder a big task. They strategically plant, maintain, and monitor those trees to maximize their benefit to our properties and the individuals who use our facilities. The outstanding work of Brian's team earned them the 2016 Missouri Arbor Award of Excellence in the municipality and government category. And each year, this award is presented by the Missouri Department of Conservation and the Missouri Community Forestry Council. Not only do trees add to the beauty of our campuses, but they provide environmental attributes, quality of life, and energy efficiency benefits. So we'd like to congratulate Blaine and his team and thank them for the work that they do to beautify our campuses and make them great places to learn and work. Thank you, Blaine. Next, I would like to invite our 2016-2017 Teacher of the Year and finalists to come Each year, we have a challenging task of choosing just one teacher to bestow this award upon. So as you might imagine, singling out just one is a challenging task. This year, we had 57 nominations and the selection committee reviewed those nominations, interviewed candidates, and narrowed it down to five finalists. And I'd like to introduce you to those five. Lauren Broaddus is a social studies teacher at Kickapoo High School. Let's me do it in order here. Angela Odom is a math teacher at Kickapoo High School and she was a Teacher of the Year finalist last year. Betsy Canelle is a project lead the way teacher at Glendale High School. And Genevieve Cronky is a fifth grade teacher at Bowerman Elementary School. And finally, Adrienne Deckard is a science and biomedical teacher at Central. And last night during the Teacher Appreciation Banquet, which was generously hosted by the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools, Adrienne was named the 2016-2017 Teacher of the Year. So join me in congratulating Adrienne. Getting close to the end. It's now my privilege to recognize Glenda Therkil for her service as state president of the Missouri State Teachers Association. Glenda began her term in state office last fall and will conclude her service at the convention this November. She has worked hard to represent teachers throughout the state as she leads MSTA State Board and visits different regions and school districts throughout Missouri. MSTA has a special recognition to share with Glenda, so now I would like to invite Margaret Watson to come forward.
After many years as Springfield MSTA president, Glenda has moved on up from region leadership now to state leadership. And we'd like to present a certificate of appreciation and thanks and recognition to that. We also know how near and dear our scholarship fund is and the spread of new teachers is to Glenda. So in her honor, we're presenting a check for $500 to the foundation for our scholarship fund.
We have one more recommendation that we know Glenda has worked hard and long hours and MSTA has a history of working long and hard hours with the board. And as a recognition of you and in honor of Glenda's service, we'd like to present a subscription to MSTA's School and Community Magazine. I'll give Dr. Jungman these two copies. If you'll notice, because Glenda's state president, her lovely picture, which she loves me to point that out, is on, she has an article in each one of these magazines this year. And you want to go ahead and look through the entire magazine because in the spring 2016 current magazine, we have an article written by Teresa Young, who is librarian at Westport School. So don't miss all the good articles. Look through the whole thing and see what's happening around our state with MSTA. Thank you.
I'd just like to tell you, thank you so much to Dr. Jungman, our HR department at the board for the time that you've allowed me to serve MSTA as state president and to be a part of many different region and state activities around the state. First and foremost, I'm a Title I Math Interventionist and I love my job. Feel free to come over and see what we're doing with math. I did a little research, the last time a Springfield teacher was MSTA state president was in 1973. So it's been a while. Thank you so much for your support.
Finally, I'm honored to recognize a group of young women who brought home a state basketball championship last month. I may just have you guys rise and stand in your place. We've got a few who are injured here.
Yes.
The Kickapoo High School lady chief and their coach, Jim Pendergrass, won the Class V Missouri State High School Activities Association Girls Basketball Championship by defeating Kirkwood 53 to 63. This win was the sixth state championship in the history of the Kickapoo's girls' basketball team. I'd like to ask Coach Pendergrass to come forward and to introduce the team members that are present.
School Board, thanks for having us tonight. This is awesome. I'm going to point out one thing, though. I walked into this room and it kind of made me think of our locker room and our players are going to recognize this right off the bat here when I point at it. This plus delta right here. We do that, we do that at halftime of every game. I call it plus minus, just so they know that minus means we really need to improve it. But we do that at halftime of every game and then we do it at the end of games to evaluate ourselves. So this is just like being at home. So thank you for having us tonight and new board members, congratulations. Our team we have with us tonight, we've got, we had to have great leadership to do what we did this year. We've got two coaches down here at the end with us, Coach Kayla Kepler, Coach Leslie Hanchy. And then we've got three seniors with us tonight, Laura Veerkant, Sharon Lopez, Kenzie Collins. We've got On the Wheel. This is her second one.
Oh, man.
Meaning she burned the rubber off the first one. Leah Vocaleg, Hannah Collins, Taya Hall, Catrice Jackson, Lexi Armstrong. So ladies, congratulations. Board, thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for giving us time to recognize all these outstanding accomplishments. We've certainly had plenty this month to celebrate.
So that was the fun part of our board meeting. Now we move on to the next fun part. At this time, the board needs, we need a motion that the board approves the agenda as presented this evening. So I do have, so do I have a motion the board approves the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Tim Rosenberg and a second by Jerry Lee. And at this time, our new board members, if you'll note, you should have a little screen will pop up that allows us the opportunity to do an electronic vote. So I won't tell you how to vote, but you pick what you want to do.
That would make it go faster if you did.
And you can see on the screen that motion carries and we're moving on. Good. We'll move on to item two, public comments to address agenda items. At this time, the Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about any issues or issues being discussed. Mrs. Luton, do we have public comments this evening? Okay, so hearing none, we will just move on then to our consent agenda minutes. With new board members, I want to give you just a little bit of an update on what we do with our consent agenda. So I will read something to you that I occasionally read, but not every meeting, so you won't be bored with this every meeting. But Board of Education Policy BDDB agendas provides that the board utilizes a consent agenda whenever appropriate. Items are placed on the consent agenda that are routine in nature or are among the many decisions the board has already determined are in the domain of the administration. When the consent agenda is presented to the board for action, the board president will provide the opportunity for any member of the board to request a discussion or removal of any item on the agenda. And we would have done that before we approved our agenda this evening. Any item requested to be removed from the consent agenda by a board member will be placed on the regular agenda or removed from the agenda entirely, depending upon the request of the member and the board's agreement. So at this time, we will take our consent agenda items, which includes 3.01, approval of minutes, 4.01, contracts, agreements, bids, and change orders, and consent agenda personnel, just promotions, elections, terminations, and employee compensation plan changes. And I will ask for one motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, and five this evening. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Charles Taylor, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And Bruce Renner. And at this time, we'll note that we have the opportunity to vote nominations. Good. Okay, note that everyone has voted. And that's really good. We're doing two votes and we're all good. Sometimes that doesn't happen when we have veteran board members at the table. Okay, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, Treasures Report. At this time, we'll ask Carol Embry to please come to the podium.
Good evening. This evening, we have our routine reports provided for you, including the items of interest. And I'll point out that one of the documents that you would be approving would be the budget amendment and transfer data. And we're showing currently for this report, a decrease of revenue of $671,546, and that is primarily in the federal revenue area and it's due to some changes within mostly the title program information. We've continued the budget review process with our leaders and ensuring that our current year and next year budget is as closely aligned as possible to what will play out in reality. Additionally, we have identified some expenditure decreases of just under $600,000. That's 596,653. And you'll note on page one of the budget amendment document, we provide for you the areas that are impacted by those funds. On page two of that document, you can see the actual funds that are impacted. And as we've continued our budget development journey, that may start making even more sense to you in terms of what is operating versus debt or capital projects or bond. So the impact is all within the operating funds. We're still holding at just a slight change in our operating fund balance percentage that's projected for the end of the year. And again, that would be if every revenue budget dollar comes in and if every budgeted expenditure dollar is paid, we would end this year at a 16.38% operating fund balance percentage. So very stable and not a lot of special information. I'll highlight, though, with our new board members at the table, that one of the documents posted is the bond financial report. And we started providing that on a monthly basis as opposed to a quarterly basis. We're currently showing just over $2.8 million in uncommitted budget for that particular bond. And work will continue on the projects that are outstanding. And later this evening, Brian Saunders will provide an update on the construction status of each of those projects. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions or comments, anyone on the board? Do you have one quick question? On the revenue budget, the total revenue increase-decrease that you mentioned, federal revenue, is that just a lack in dollars that we haven't received yet or a decrease in allocation?
Right. Actually, it represents basically tightening up the budget a little more. In the past, we've provided for the full amount, including carryover funds, then there are a variety of changes within all of that. But we're just working on honing in on what will be our actual experience in the current year. No change from a federal allocation perspective is affecting this.
Okay, very good. Anyone have?
Thank you.
Again, thank you for all the reading materials and all the information you provide to us regarding the financials and anyone else that would care to look at all the information. So I think what's especially helpful is the items of interest that you provide for us. Thank you. I know a lot of work goes into that. Okay, moving on to Agenda 7.01, 23rd. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I've got to back up. I'm ready to go on that. Okay. So yes, this is an action item and we do need at this time a motion to approve the Treasures Report as presented for April 19, 2016. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Jerry Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Joe Patterson, so we will vote.
Thank you. Now we will move on to 7.01. I'm too anxious to hear about the bond projects quarterly report. I understand why. Yeah. This is Brian Saunders before us.
Good evening, Board, newly elected members and re-elected members, Dr. Jungman, cabinet and guests. I'm honored this evening to be able to present to you the 2000 Bond Project Update and Status Report for April 2013. We have completed in our 2013 Bond, Glendale High School, Hickory Hills, Kickapoo Phases I and I/B, and Sherwood Elementary. Remaining to be completed this summer is Fremont Elementary and Kickapoo Phase II, which is our auditorium, the FEMA safe room, and the new east entrance. And with that, you should have in your package the complete report showing all of that, which includes the summary of the contract log. We have a very respectful continuance on our projects and we're very pleased with the 2% to 3% change orders. We're very proud of that. You have photos in your package which show about a week and a half to two weeks ago. So what I've done is in the last couple of days, I took a trip to each of the remaining projects to give you some updated photos. So as I say, a picture's worth a thousand words. I'd like to be able to present to you and give you a quick tour and give you a flavor, especially for our new board members. Beginning with Fremont, I've kept a couple of slides in here that Mr. Wen has presented over the last couple of meetings to give you an overview of the architects. Thank you, Carol. So this gives you an overall artist architectural conception floor plan that shows you the spaces in our new Fremont. This one shows the segments of the construction phasing area A at the top, which is north, area B in the center, and then area C. You'll notice in the subsequent photographs, a difference in the status of construction because the way we phase this out, area C and actually to the left of area B is the repurposing of existing building. So you'll see a difference in the construction between area A and the level of construction, the completion of construction versus further down south, area C. I parked on the southeast corner of the property for Fremont. This is the area of the concrete and the bottom of the page is where you're going to see some athletic areas and outside activities. Playground is behind me. Up to your left is the new gymnasium. And the building to your right is some of the new learning labs. Walking in the northeast area, looking southwest, this is the learning labs. And what you see to your right is the administration area. You may notice the kind of the pinkish area that is a substrate that is not a final appearance that is going to be covered up with the metal skin here in the near future. This is going to be the new entry right here. This is where the students will go in the primary entry to the north and the buses will let them off. As you walk inside the building there, again, there's a status of the completion. We have our steel studs in place with our building systems, mechanical systems, wire racks and such, and that's the administration area. If I turn immediately to my left, that's one of the learning labs to the west. Go south of the administration area, this is between the area A that I referenced and area B. The component to your left would be the northwest corner of the new gym. And the windows looking out to the west would be one of the patios to the west. Taking a closer look, you can see how the architect designed the components of the building to complement the existing structure. What you see on your left is existing architecture and what you see on the right is new, with the new shape and the new brick color and texture to complement that. Going further south into that gym, this is our new gym at Fremont. You see the acoustic panels in the ceiling with the lights, the basketball goals are hung, precast concrete panels, and there's our maple floor. It is not yet finished, but it is installed, the maple floor, soon to be finished. Going further south in the kitchen area, this is the kitchen, one view, another view. You can see where we have a more completion area. We have the epoxy floor in place. The kitchen is installed, the systems are in place, and there's your ceiling tiles. Going again from that location directly to the east is through the old APR. This is now the dining hall. It will continue to be used as an APR. The windows above were glass block and replaced with storefront windows, allowing a great deal more illumination to come in. And then the floor you see, although we're in the construction, there's a lot of dust there. That is a polished concrete floor. Touring up and going further west, this is the cabinets in one of the existing spaces. This is, these are, this is two of the existing classrooms with the wall removed, allowing for a double use of space there. So that's now a component of two large classrooms. You see a little bit to your left, you see the garage door. With a better view, there's an entry from the hallway, from the door into this space, and then you see the aluminum frame glass garage door, allowing for flexibility and use of that space. Going further north again, around, wrapping around, this is that patio that you saw earlier through the glass windows. This is a new construction. Again, you'll see the metal panel, which will cover the pinkish substrate. I climbed up on the ladder on the roof, went north, this is the northwest corner. I'm on top of the roof. There you see the parapet wall cap looking down into the concrete courtyard at the entry and there's our larger new parking lot to the north. And there's the three segments again. This has probably been one of our most challenging schedules on this project, but we've been working aggressively between the construction team, design, and the SPS Bond Project Manager. We're working aggressive. We are catching up aggressively and very rapidly. We do expect to meet the opening of school in August. Kickapoo Phase II. This is the architectural rendering from the inside of the new auditorium. You see the seating. And a term that we've all learned, many of us have learned a new voluntary term as you come in from the south side coming into the new auditorium, which will seat 910. Then you can go into the further north area or back up into the upper rise. You see the ceiling, drop ceiling area. This is looking to the, and I apologize for the lighting, it was fairly dark in there and the flash, it could only do so much there. But there's the looking north to the stage area and the orchestra pit. The orchestra pit. This is part of the rigging, a new item for us in this project with the use of the theater and the fly loft. This is the rigging at the lower level on the, it'll be on the east side. And this is on the west side of the stage. Looking east, you see the expansive cabling and ropes for that rigging. From that location, you actually can climb up going to the catwalk. That's the first set of stairs. This is the second set of stairs. Continue up, this is the catwalk. I'm on the east end of the catwalk up above, looking down into the stage and to the orchestra Leaving the actual auditorium in the front where the guests would come in for a performance. There I'm looking east out towards the east area of the campus. There's the light. Continue walking there, I'm going south now in the concourse. What's to the right is the old band hall, the current band hall with new structure, new glass to the east. This is the part of the project is the new east entry. I took this photo, so you can see to the right there is our attendance office. Walking out, this gives you an overview from the, that would be the east entrance, the door. Beyond, you can see the auditorium, which is also our fourth FEMA safe room, yet to be painted. Beyond, you can see the the auditorium, which is also our fourth FEMA safe room, yet to be painted. And there's an overall view of the current statuses was taken about three days ago. The schedule for Kickapoo is going very well. We expect to be finished probably late June, early July, ready for students to come in. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Comments?
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item nine point oh one, Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions. At this time, do we have any questions, comments about this set of board policies that we are revising? Any comments, anyone wants to?
This represents, for the most part, everything in the big overhaul of policy adoption. You're welcome, new board members, so.
He says that a lot.
So well. Just rolls right off then.
And for our guests this evening, these were brought forward to the Board for first read at our April third Board Study Session. So, if we have had specific questions, we have had the opportunity to ask the appropriate administrative director for assistance with our questions. So, I think at this time, if we have no questions or no comments, then I will ask for a motion that the Board approves all listed policy adoptions, deletions, and revisions as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Tim Rosenberg, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alina Leonard. And at this time, we need to take a vote. Very good. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item nine, Personnel Separation. You'll note on on this particular item, this item was removed from the consent agenda, personnel elections, promotions, and separations, which is where we typically vote on these. But due to a personal relationship of an individual within the within that agenda item, that personal relationship with a board member, we pulled that off and we will be voting on that separate from consent agenda. So, at this time, do I have a motion that the Board approve the personnel separation item as presented to us?
So moved.
Thank you. Jill Patterson, and I have a second by Alina.
Second.
Yeah. Vote. Any discussion or comments? Good. Motion carries. We'll move on to nine point oh two, Missouri School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. MSBA is a delegate-driven organization, and local board members, through their involvement in MSBA's Board of Directors and an advocacy committee, review and recommend resolutions to the Delegate Assembly. Delegates will serve as a liaison between MSBA and the local Board of Education to ensure that information about MSBA programs, services, and activities is communicated to the other members of the Board. So, the annual meeting of the Delegate Assembly of the Missouri School Board Association is scheduled during the MSBA MASA Fall Conference, that is September twenty-nine through October second. A second Delegate Assembly is held in June each year and deals with governance issues. I think our June meeting is the fifth and sixth. So, the Board, our Board sends three delegates and a designated alternate to the MSBA Delegate Assembly. So, that would be both June and the Fall Conference. So, one of these delegates in the past has also served as a member of the MSBA Board of Directors, which is typically Mr. Lee. And am I right, Jerry, on that? You are our our executive person. So, in addition to hoping that Mr. Lee will agree to do that again this year, but so in addition to that, we do need two additional, two, yeah, it's, I'll get this out in a minute. And an alternate will be named tonight. Is it necessary they have to be named tonight?
Typically.
Okay, so. Okay. So, I, at this time, I guess I'm asking for volunteers. If you, I I will tell you that Alina has indicated to me that she would be interested in serving as a delegate, which we can discuss that as to whether we all approve of that. No, I'm just kidding.
I definitely approve of her doing it instead of me.
This is not something that. This is not something that typically becomes a brawl for us as a Board to decide. Although, I have been a delegate for the last couple of years, and I find it very interesting. And it's, it is, it is a lot of fun to be around board members throughout the state and get to vote, especially the little clickers are fun. But anyway. So, at this time, do I have other board members? I I think the last year, it was Bruce served as delegate. I served as delegate. I think Annie Bush was our alternate delegate, and then Jerry. So, it might be time and fun for someone else to do that this year. I don't know. Bruce, what are your thoughts?
Oh, yes.
Don't you love it whenever?
I would think everybody should have that experience.
And I think it's, and Jerry, you gi- give me your thoughts on that since you are Mr. MSBA for us, so.
Well, I I know it's kind of humorous, but it is a really, really important function and and should be taken very seriously because it does really set the direction for MSBA and what we, what tunes we march to in Jeff City. It's it's setting our direction for advocacy, and so it's really important that that the delegates are there, participate, and provide input to what we're trying to accomplish. So, you know, like, we get three, that's 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 a great opportunity for us. I don't have to be a delegate as a board member. If three of you want to do it, that's okay, but I'm happy to be a delegate to do that again, but it's not required.
Because you're already on the executive board.
I'm already on the board to do that, so you can have three. I just don't get to vote in Delegate Assembly, which is fine. It's no requirement, so.
But it puts us at the advantage of you already having all that information.
I'm not saying no.
Seems like an efficient way to do it.
I'm happy to serve.
I think that Mr. Lee has, and we do not do nominations and seconds and votes. It's more of a, I would be happy to do this. So, I think we have Jerry Lee listed as a delegate. And Alina has mentioned that she would be happy to serve. Anyone else be happy to serve, and we can talk about it.
Well, I would be more than happy to defer to any of my other colleagues, but the advocacy dimension appeals to me.
Also a great way for new board members to learn a lot of the advocacy elements of MSBA and the platform, so it's a good opportunity.
I think we will have the historical piece of Jerry there to answer questions and assist. So, I'll be happy to serve as an alternate if something happens and someone's not able to attend. Anyone have any other?
Well, now that I know that four of you are interested, though, we could have Jerry do his role that he already has and the three of you do it.
I said alternate.
Yeah, but he's, I know what you said. I felt like you said that to be deferential, and I'm pointing out that it's not the only option. Trying to suss out how, what you guys want to do because he offered you two choices. And one of them is that you could, did you really want to be an alternate?
The alternate serves in the event that someone is not going to do it. I think it'd be great for our two new board members and Jerry to serve that role. I'm good with that. Mr. Rosenberg, what do you have? What say you?
As you go, so shall I.
Wow, put that in your pocket.
Okay, so without any other other discussion, I think our delegates will be Jerry Lee, Alina Leonard, and Charles Taylor, and I will serve as alternate. Everyone happy? Okay, we get to move right on. If all our decisions were so easy. Okay, moving on to ten point oh one, Audit Charter Update.
Just unfinished that stuff.
Just unfinished, okay.
That were presented at the last meeting, so if you have questions, let us know, but they're presented for your consideration tonight.
That information was shared, the April Study Session regarding proposal. So, what we need to do this thing is just approve the updated internal audit charter. So, do I have a motion that the Board approves the internal audit charter as presented? I'm sorry, didn't ask for questions.
Well, yeah, may I just make a comment? I I hope that no one outside of the Board and and administration is is concerned by this. What what happened from my perspective was that there was a an opening in the in the and a need in the financial office for our current auditors' capabilities and talents. And we looked at alternative ways to fill the position of internal auditor, and it seemed to make sense to us to go out into the marketplace and and contract for those services. That's not unusual. I sit on a bank board, and that's what we do. And we are a highly regulated industry. The banking is a highly regulated industry, and we we use outside auditors. We find that they have a good deal of of breadth of knowledge just from the fact that they work with a number of different other different banks. And I would assume that when the time comes to contract with an auditor, we will do, we will benefit this from the same kind of benefit of dealing with other school districts. I think we're going to get our money's worth all the way around, and so it it's a prudent move and one I'm going to be voting for. But I just didn't want that to go unsaid here at the table.
And and the audit charter that we're looking at tonight, voting on tonight, is something we as a Board have set. And so, whatever or whoever will be doing that will be following our, you know, our lead or will be guiding those audits. I also under- understand from visiting with a few folks in business that not only with the process or the the direction we're headed is that you also get not just one internal auditor, but you get a team. Is that correct? So, a team that will come forward that can look at many things in a short timeframe to bring back to the Board, so. Okay, thank you, Tim.
I wouldn't want this to be taken as a reflection on anything that's come before because I don't have that knowledge and that, so I say that only to say this. I think the outsourcing, the internal audit creates a certain independence of perspective that I think will will stand us in good stead in terms of public credibility. Again, that's not a reflection on anything that's come before, but moving forward, I think it seems like a smart move.
Sorry, any other comments?
Did we decide, we haven't put it, did we put it out for bid?
Waiting for approval of the charter update, and that's the next step is to, I think we're already beginning the process of the RFP to consider who we would have as that firm, so.
I've worked with Mr. Mueller in developing the request for proposals, and we will be ready to launch that, if not tomorrow, within the next couple of days. And the plan would be then that we would secure the internal auditor. And that company would meet with the Board each time, not only for direction on what work to be done, but also to re- to provide feedback and reports.
I guess my question is, when we put those RFPs out, normally the Board doesn't have anything to do with RFPs or selecting the one that's there. Now, in this instance, when they're going to be reporting to us, will we be the ones actually reviewing that? And I'm, I mean, I I'm not sure who has the expertise to do it. I I mean, that's just a step that I'm not sure. If they're going to work with us, do we pick them, or does somebody else say, here's what you need to look at and these things, and I don't know.
And I actually engaged in a conversation about that with our president and vice president at the time. And I do want to clarify that this last time that we did an RFP for our regular financial auditor, we did have board representation at the table. Annie served in that capacity. And at this point, unless there's further conversation to change that, we plan to have a board member at the table with administration as well. And Mr. Mueller would definitely be at the table with his experience in internal auditing. And Dr. Frederick has indicated she would be able to be available for that. But again, that could be determined if a change needs to be made.
I'm just not sure about that, since they're reporting to us, if somebody else ought to be picking the person reporting to us. I I just, I probably need more. Because I, this process hadn't ever happened here. Does it, has it happened in other districts? And who, you know, it would seem like, I know what the internal auditor's supposed to do. I understand the role, and I just don't want there to be any question over if there's with the RFP, who who's making those selections.
And Bruce, I can tell you that for what it's worth at the bank, it is a combination of the Board and and management that makes that decision. They, and we come together and the Board affirms the final selection.
You'll approve the RFP, and then you'll have board representation on the RFP review, just kind of like Wayland currently reported both to me and the Board, right? So, we have both, at Tim's point, dual report. So, it'll be dual review of the RFP and then your approval of that RFP. So, if you want more than one more board member, that's perfectly up to your recommendation of how many people you want to sit on that RFP review committee with us, with some team members of the administration, so. You, yeah, up to three.
Do three.
Yeah, you could ask to cap there.
If you want three, I'm just saying, you can do three. But I I think more representation is better than less.
As many as you want, up to three.
Yeah, I I think at this point, we've got a, we're getting ready to do a specific agenda item, but I think this is something that that maybe the board officers could take back and and decide. But it it sounds like may at at least one and maybe as many as three board members ought to be part of this process just to keep it totally shared responsibility, shared authority.
Excellent. So, at this time, though, our business is to approve our charter, our audit charter. So, do I have a motion to approve the audit charter?
I'll move.
Jerry Lee, a second?
Second.
Okay, Jill Patterson. So, we will vote at this time. And then we will continue discussions, the discussion comes forward as the RFPs come back in terms of who wants to serve. Okay, very good. Good, Bruce? Okay. We'll move on to ten point oh two, Technology Lease Ignite. We had, again, this came before us at our study session, and we have had an opportunity to visit or have specific questions answered. But if you have other questions or comments this evening?
The only thing I would add, because this was enhanced, because we had the RFP for interest proposals from banks, and I did update for the information posted that we're very pleased with the responses that we received. There was great participation from our local banks, and the interest rate is one point one six percent, which is quite good. The interest rates received ranged from one point one six to four point seven six five, and that was a great rate for us. Clayton Holdings is a subsidiary of Commerce Bank, so.
I'm sorry, just a.
Commerce Bank is our depository.
Quick question is, is it typical to get seven?
Quick question is, is it typical to get seven separate proposals? Because it seems like in the past, we haven't had that many proposals.
I would, I would say no. We were very specific in reaching out to those institutions where representatives have contacted us to ensure that any future opportunities, they would have opportunity and have advanced notification. We also did post on our website, as we typically post any of our bid proposals, and we did receive one as a result of that as well, so we were quite pleased.
Any questions?
A general question, I know that, you know, these are big numbers, and I'm very supportive of the initiative. I guess my question is, we, I think we hear a lot about the very positive impact of the Ignite initiative over the three years. Are there, because all funds are reallocations of one kind or another, are there impacts at the building level that are less positive? Or are there specifically allocated funds to technology?
These particular funds would be separate from any building allocations that we provide. Those remain intact. And you are correct, it's certainly a matter of prioritization and ensuring that we're taking care of the whole, the district as a whole, to provide for the needs of the kids.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so at this time, this is an action item. So do I hear a motion that the board approves a technology lease for Ignite year two equipment and materials?
And the motion is very lengthy, and I probably need you to read that out loud.
Can we read all of that?
Includes the resolution.
I'll go back to unauthorized execution delivery of a lease purchase agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC as lesser for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain technology equipment, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing all other actions related to the lease purchase financing contemplated by this resolution.
Thank you so much.
That's a lot. Yes.
Oh, it's this resolution right here, is what you just read?
Yes.
Couldn't find something to tap on to find it, but now I have.
Yeah, it is under recommended action.
Thank you.
I read it all, except maybe the first. Okay, so now, do we have a motion that we, a motion for all of that that I just read? Because I'm not reading it again.
So moved.
Thank you. Did you get the motion by Tim? Was there? Okay, thank you. And second, Charles Taylor. So at this time, we'll vote. Sorry about that.
These are my mics.
Good to go.
Very hot.
Thank you.
Wake up, Nicole. Wake up back there.
We needed that. Okay, moving on to ten point oh three Budget Development 2016-17, GO-CAPS and Health Benefit Trust. Thank you. Zimri, thank you.
All right, so yes, we are talking this evening about GO-CAPS and the Health Benefit Trust Funds. And recall again, our seven separate funds displayed in that pie chart for you, and GO-CAPS is a tiny little sliver right here with Health Benefit Trust right next to it. We'll show that again in another view. I want to thank you again for this opportunity to talk about this over a multitude of meetings so that when we reach that June 7 budget presentation, it won't feel quite as burdensome. We will provide the budget presentation June 7, and then ask for final approval at the June 28 meeting. And so the information that you're receiving along the journey will help you have a foundation of understanding when we make that presentation. So this evening, we are talking about the Greater Ozark Center for Advanced Professional Studies Fund and also the Health Benefit Trust Fund. Again, GO-CAPS is a very tiny little sliver of all of our funds. Health Benefit Trust is just at 8.29%. The GO-CAPS Fund is considered a fiduciary fund, and the resources do not belong to the Springfield School District, but we are custodian of them. And we certainly contribute to that, but that's a separate expenditure out of our operating account. That's why it's a separate fund, very independent. The other fund we're talking about this evening is the Health Benefit Trust Fund, and this is an internal service fund. There are a variety of opinions about what to call it, and down the road, we may change what we're calling it. But basically, services are furnished by a department of the district, and it's on a cost reimbursement basis. So again, we keep this as a separate fund and for tracking purposes. And our discussion objectives this evening for the GO-CAPS Fund would be, as usual, what are the fund sources? Where does the money come from? District participation, tuition rates, course offerings, and our current and next year budgets. When we take a look at the Health Benefit Trust Fund, we'll talk about the self-insured versus fully insured benefit and fund sources, again, the cash flow and district health contributions. So starting with GO-CAPS, the primary source of revenue is tuition payments from participating districts. And this year, that tuition is equivalent to $350,000. And this slide shows you the participating districts and how the tuition, or the seat allocation, rather, was calculated was based on September enrollment, providing then a percentage distribution of available seats by each district. And that shows you the total there, that we had 214 seats for the entire fiscal year for student participation. So half of that each semester, basically. Obviously, Springfield being the largest district in the area, has the lion's share of those seats, again, based on a prorated amount. So in the current year, our GO-CAPS budget, again, the tuition revenue is $350,000, and the expenditure estimate this year is $319,400. So as you can see, the budget has been operating well, it is sustaining itself, there are no concerns with this program in the current year. And actually, you can see that we are leaving some funds at the end of the year based on our current allocation projection. This is all based on a tuition rate of $1,500 per student per semester, so that's per seat per semester, 1,500. And what this provides for us in the current year would be one strand of medicine, one strand of engineering and manufacturing, and one strand of entrepreneurship for professional studies. So let's take a look at next year's budget. We are anticipating increasing the strand offerings. So again, we would have the three that had occurred in the current year, and then we would also add one medicine and one tech solutions course offering. Our tuition revenue estimate based on participation anticipated is $609,200, and our expenditure estimate at this time is $562,974. And this slide shows you the distribution of expenditures relative to the current year, how we anticipate those being made. And we do have an administrative services fee. It's calculated at 3.5% of the total expenditure budget to reimburse the Springfield School District for the work that we do behind the scenes to run this program from a financial perspective. The tuition estimate, though, is going to be reduced based on the calculations that we have made, and we are looking at $1,200 per student per semester. So that's great news that we're able to offer additional programming for additional kids and be able to keep the price per student at a reduced point. Oh, so do you want to talk about GO-CAPS? Are there any questions relative to GO-CAPS before we move on to Health Benefit Trust?
Let's see if there's any questions. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Have we been the fiscal agent since the start?
Yes, we have.
I was thinking it was somewhere else for some reason.
No, we served as fiscal agent from the beginning. I understand there is a GO-CAPS board that's part of the structure, and then they make recommendations. Obviously, you're the fiscal agent that authorized all the spending, but they make the program recommendations. That's made up of business leaders from the strand areas, as well as superintendents from the districts. One of the unique things about this also is our partnership with the Chamber. They are deployed to be kind of the project managers to build the relationships, but they do not serve in a fiscal agent. We've always been fiscal agents.
I have a question, and I'm sure it's remedial. Whether it's $1,500 or $1,200, am I correct that the district, like NIXA, is paying that, not the family of the student who's going?
That is correct.
That's what I wanted to know.
Tuition that is paid by the school district on behalf of that student. No different than vocational technical tuition charges might be made in other areas where there are VOTEC attendance.
And it's not all day, right? It's part of a day?
Correct. This is very much the same structure as our OTC agreements, where they go for half-day programming. So it's a two-and-a-half to three-hour block in the morning and in the afternoon, so they go to one or the other, not both.
And I didn't put it in the financial piece of it, but we have partners throughout the community who are working with us and providing facilities for these students, and that has been a tremendous support for not only the Springfield School District, but the other participating districts.
Is that like Mercy and Eskenazi Chocolate as examples?
Mercy?
Currently, actually, the site hosts are E-Factory, Cox, and SRC.
Not those at all that I said.
Right. Mercy is the site host for Health Sciences Academy, so they provide a different classroom environment for students.
But not a GO-CAPS.
But not a GO-CAPS classroom. It is one of the conversations, actually, for the medicine expansion. Now, Mercy-
Let him know I was very cutting edge with my question.
Mercy is a partner in the program. One of the unique things is why we have a site host. That is not the exclusive partner for programming, right? So just because Cox is the medicine programming site host, the advisory board and the group that comes to help provide student experiences is made up of medical representatives from multiple different agencies in our community. Same thing with manufacturing and engineering and entrepreneurship on the other side. Bottom line, this program is not possible without great partnerships from our business, providing both classroom space and financial support in so many different ways beyond just the, and that's the reason the cost is able to go down, because we have a minimal investment, and that's really the support staff and the administrative structure. They're providing so much more backbone for us to help make these things possible.
That's what's impressive to me. In my world, I'm not familiar with decreasing tuition. So this is, clearly, it's a very efficiently operating program, very impressive.
I would just like to thank Carol, who has been available to, I know both Charles and I, to answer questions, and I thank you for incorporating some of the answers that we discussed on the phone into the presentation, and that conversation was this afternoon. So that is very impressive, but I appreciate you addressing those questions.
And besides strand expansion, you're, isn't there at least one more school coming in?
Yeah, there, actually, there's a couple. Marshfield is coming in. They've already been approved by the GO-CAPS board to be a partner next year. And I believe Spokane had put in a proposal last meeting, so they're small, small districts, but the network is continuing to expand, which is an exciting addition.
Their graduates come here to work. I mean, that's the whole-
Yeah, the whole concept around the-
The whole idea is that we ought to be getting bigger because that's where the jobs are, so.
It's one of those unique areas where we see ourselves partnering with regional school districts. You know, we compete on Friday night and in the classroom in a lot of different ways, but this is one that it makes no sense for us to compete because our businesses, like you say, hire from every one of them. And the last thing they need to, businesses want to do is create 12 partnerships with 12 different districts to support pockets of kids. This is a much more efficient way to make that happen, so it's exciting to see the partnerships and how they're developing.
It's, do the number of seats available, is that always on that prorated basis depending on the relative size of the district?
That is where we're starting. So in order to make it fiscally sound for us, bottom line is we prorated those out based on the size of the district, and no matter if you sent your kids or not, you were paying for those seats, just because we weren't going to take the financial risk as the fiscal agent. Now, as we move, we'd like to move into more of a market-driven situation where you say, how many seats do you want? Because if Willard doesn't want all eight of their seats in engineering, I might want two more, right? So we want more of a market-driven environment, but we see that kind of coming into the play in year three or four, yeah, so. But that's the way we've started. It is this equal allocation so that everybody has equal opportunity to get students into the program, so. Any questions?
I'm not real sure who to address this to, maybe to John or to Carol, but of, since we have three strands, medicine, engineering, manufacturing, and entrepreneurship, then we're adding medicine and tech, that may answer my question. Do we have any one strand that's more popular, more students want to get into, and any one that's more kind of struggling?
Yeah. Well, and, you know, always as you build up programs, entrepreneurship was a late ad. It was actually, and it was a strategic ad by SPS because we had an E-Factory classroom that wasn't being utilized very well. So that one was smallest, the smallest classroom this year. Now, it's went and grown up to 20-plus, I think, enrolled for both morning and afternoon next year. Healthcare, by far, the most over-enrolled, so we will be turning away some healthcare students. I think the applications were 250-plus from the entire network, so we're going to go from 50 seats to 100 next year, because that's a semester, that's a full-year program. So we're doubling the size of that, but we will be turning away some healthcare students. All the other ones, I think we'll be able to meet every student's request, but they'll be at 80% to 100% of classroom capacity. But healthcare is a, is a driving interest, obviously, and it's a great place where we know the job market exists for students, as well as, that's one of the unique things here, is we try to drive these programs around job market needs, especially in our community.
How were those 100 kids chosen out of the 250?
They have an application process, so those are reviewed by a team, so they apply.
Truly a selection process. Okay, that's what was-
It's not, it's not, it's not a lottery process. Now, individual districts, if they want to do something to figure out how they want to submit their kids, because they only have so many seats, but we really go straight to the kids in the districts and say, everybody apply, and then it's a selection process. Try to, trying to figure out ways to meet everybody's, every student's needs, and just not enough seats at this point, but it's growing.
Denise, I know we're talking about, we're talking with Carol about the budget, but this has opened up some other questions, so I'll just go ahead and put John on the spot and ask, in your view, are we moving at the right pace? Are we ahead? Are we slow? And, and I guess I would, I would frame that in, in terms of student demand and maybe what we need to be doing for students.
Sure. You know, I think it's a manageable pace right now, because as you get more student interest, you have to expand partnerships.
Right.
And it's a big call on the community to give up 1,000 square feet in your building, plus parking spots, plus all the other things that come with. This is not an easy financial ask for our partners. So I think it's a manageable pace. I, I'm glad that students are pushing us to continue to grow based on their needs and interests. We've kind of charted out a four-year plan as that CAPS board and strategic planning of trying to grow, you know, about 100 kids a year over the next three to four years, and we think that student interest is already, obviously, there. It's beyond that this year. But bottom line, it comes to what the performance is in the classroom. So do kids have a great experience this year? If they do, they'll go home and tell other students about the great experience, which is what's happened this year, and then it will continue to push us to grow the program. There is a point of, you know, how much can the community, how many classrooms can they provide us?
Right.
And we don't ever see, you know, CAPS being this experience for every kid, right? Every junior or senior. It's another avenue. We have lots of different avenues for kids to find their place, whether it be IB, whether it be AP, whether it be Kickapoo U or Quest, or there's all these different avenues, OTC, career and technical preparation. CAPS is just another one of those locations where they can find their niche, you know, find a relevant, great learning experience that drives them towards hopefully being a better educated consumer of their next step, and I think that's, but I think we're going at a reasonable rate. I've been a part of a couple other, or one other growth in the Kansas City area, and I think we are growing at about the same rate they did in their first two years. And this is a replicated program that goes from Utah to Michigan to, it started in Kansas, obviously, with the Blue Valley District. So it's typical. One of the unique things about us, and it's what I love about it to Bruce's point, is we do this regionally. A lot of those districts do it by themselves, which is, I think, something for our region to be proud of. A lot of those districts do it by themselves, which is, I think, something for our region to be proud of, so. Great question.
One last thing while we're kind of off the budget a little bit, but we're talking about GoCaps. Have we identified any barriers for any of our students that are interested in this, that cannot participate because of, well, any, any barriers? I know, we're going to talk later about some of the things that we saw at the National School Board Conference. And I know one that I went to in particular was very focused on breaking down any barriers that might keep certain students from taking advantage of programs like this and-
I think one of the things that we always continue to battle against is for access is that transportation component. Students drive themselves there, or the districts have figured out solutions to that. We're still working on that in the first year of what does that look like. And the good news is, as programs grow, then it becomes more financially feasible to provide a consistent transportation. So that's one. It's a pain point of us trying to figure out, how do we make sure that that does not create a barrier? What we've told our principals is a force our, force our hand, tell our kids to sign up. If they're interested, force our hand. And we will work on finding transportation solutions for students, just like we do when they go to OTC or other programming, so. And we've actually talked about sharing that bus, right? Because that bus is coming to the middle of town. There's already two programs that are really close to OTC with the Cox site and with the E-Factory site. So we're looking for solutions. One of the other things that we want to continue to support students is, this is a business stress environment. So it's a, it's a training environment, but it's also not something that we want them to see as a, as a obstacle. So we're working with students to provide solutions so that that's a reason, not a reason that they would ever choose not to be a part of the program. So we want to train them up in that, but we also want to help provide them, you know, the support. We have lots of different funders that can help us meet those individual needs, so. Those are the two that come to mind off the top of my head. There's always pain points when you're starting something up new. But those, those are, the third one, I would say, and we'll just make the call, is we're looking for a tech solutions classroom right now. And finding a partner, we have partners that say, ooh, want to do it, but I got no space, because my tech space is already completely full. So we're making the call right now to find a tech solutions host site for that classroom. And so if you know anybody in the business world that, that thinks that they could host a teacher and some students on their site, send that, send that our way, because we're start, we've already put out some ask and haven't found that partner yet, but.
Since we're way off track.
We're still in the GoCaps area. It's a budget aspect.
As far as business partnerships, much luck with outside the area with partners as opposed to all of them being in Springfield.
I couldn't speak to that specifically, because I don't know what those, I don't get in on the daily operations of those advisory boards that the teachers are working with. I know that was the design, was the hope that, that this isn't just a Springfield employer. And that's why the chamber, you know, they have outside arms. They try to make those connections. But I think the core is probably mainly Springfield industry and business. But the hope is that they would stretch out. And that's one of the things that we hope to see play out, is that senior year almost becomes more internships where kids are going back out. And they may do some of that in Springfield, but they may do some of that in their local community and do some of the job shadowings and internships back closer to homeschool, to their homeschool.
Well, we didn't plan to do a little presentation on GoCaps, but we-
Well, but budget, budget represents priorities. And so it's good for us to be talking about this in that context, I think. I, I hope you're okay with it.
I am way okay with it.
I'd wrap up by saying, as we move to Health Benefit Trust, I was able to sit in on a, at the Missouri Career Center. They had, I think, forty students regionally from a lot of different districts come and do a kind of a reverse roundtable for business. You know, this, they do a roundtable, I think, monthly to have businesses come together and talk about their needs and their, their ideas of how the Career Center can serve them. This one was the businesses on the outside of the roundtable, and it was all about students that were in high school and how businesses could attract and retain students as they went through, as they became graduates. And it was great to have a lot of the GoCaps kids represented, as well as all of those other programs that are really providing those relevant experiences for kids. The business owners in the, in the room, I think, left feeling good about the students that are leaving our schools. And also heard some things that they need to work on to create the work environments that our students want to be a part of, to stay in this region and not, you know, have that brain drain aspect where they might leave us. So it's fun, fun listening. Sorry, I could talk for hours. I'll leave it.
So to wrap up on GoCaps, I do want to point out a couple of things. I want you to understand that the employees, the teachers who are hired to serve these students are Springfield Public Schools employees. As fiscal agent, we participate in the hiring of those employees and then pay them. And then, of course, the GoCaps Fund reimburses the district for those expenditures. So I wanted you to understand that. And at the end of June thirty, two thousand seventeen, unless any of the data changes, we would anticipate an ending balance then of seventy-six thousand eight twenty-six. So current year will end at thirty thousand six hundred. It's not our goal to make money on the program. We just want it to remain stable. And we will look at it each year as we determine the appropriate tuition rate relative to the expenditures. Any questions about that? Okay, great. All right, we'll move on and talk about Health Benefit Trust. So one might ask, why be self-insured when you could be fully insured? The bottom line is that we cut out the middleman, if you will. We do not have a provider who is making a profit by selling insurance for us, okay? We are able to reduce our fixed costs through that process, and that reduces overall plan costs. So we're also able to provide a more flexible, full flexibility, rather, in terms of how we design the plan and provide for our customers, our employees. And we do purchase stop-loss insurance coverage. That is what allows us to sleep at night. And in the event that there would be a catastrophic medical situation for one of our employees or dependents, then we would have other coverage that would kick in. Cover that. Yes, sir?
So when you say stop-loss, that's basically high deductible insurance?
That's correct.
I mean incredibly high, quarter million dollar deductible.
You have it. Exactly right. Yes. And there are some other layers of deductibles that need to be met through that. And I can delve into that in a one-on-one with you if you're interested. I don't have all of that information with me this evening. We do have partners in our self-insured process, and that includes MedPay as a third-party administrator for claims processing of those medical claims. So none of that is coming to the district, and district employees are not handling that. I want to emphasize that. Also, Delta Dental provides third-party administration for claims processing of dental claims. And then MedTrack is our pharmacy benefit administrator. And overall support is provided to us by our employee insurance broker, and that's JW Terrell and Company. And we have a new relationship with them. We did a request for proposal not that long ago, and that's worked very well for, for us in the district. So this shows you basically, it's just a basic snapshot, that typically the expenditures represent seventy, are represented by seventy percent in claims, fifteen percent fixed costs, and fifteen percent reserves. And I want to talk with you a little bit more about what that looks like for us. The district pays premiums. So when, when the employee paycheck is processed, a check ends up being generated that is payable to the Health Benefit Trust. And that money goes into the Health Benefit Trust, whether it be the district providing the four-hundred-and-sixty dollars per month contribution per qualifying employee, or if it's a deduction that the employee has for dependent care coverage. The district is paying five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars a year for this health insurance that's provided to eligible employees. The census data, and I called on a friend in the Human Resources Department, Kim Serot, and I think she's here. So thank you, Kim, for helping. I have lots of friends that helped me prepare for information that's provided to you, always the finance department. But Kim helped me by providing the census data. We have three thousand four hundred and ten active employees. And then we have four hundred and thirty-six other. And that's mostly comprised of retirees or people who are participating under COBRA or the Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, in case inquiring minds want to know what COBRA means. There it is. We, in all, are providing insurance for just over five thousand six hundred lives when you add in dependents to our insurance coverage. So this slide provides you a three-year snapshot of cash flow trends for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. And you can see that in previous years, the fund balance was below desired level. There were a couple of months when we actually were in the negative. And at that point, we had to subsidize with operating monies. So we did a transfer out of our operating bank account over to the Health Benefit Trust. We also, in those year, in these years, did make an extra contribution at the end of the year. You'll recall that we provided a two-million-dollar infusion into the Health Benefit Trust Fund to get the level up to an appropriate point. And this shows you what had, what happened in FY two thousand fifteen. So again, we ended June thirty, two thousand fifteen with one million two hundred and fifty-five thousand forty-seven as a cash balance. Because when you look ahead, well, let me comment first, that the reserve balance, there's no legal requirement on what the balance should be, which is very interesting. I've talked with some of my colleagues in other districts that have self-insurance. And it's intriguing to us that there's no actual legal requirement. So a general rule of thumb that is typically applied is that you ensure that your bank account balance has two months' worth of claims and three months' worth of administrative costs. And for us, then, that calculates to be approximately a four-point-six-million-dollar reserve balance in the bank account. And as you recall from the previous slide, we were not even close to that level. But there is good news. We've, we have attained a greater balance. I'll comment first that the, the increased contributions in June, when you look at what is coming up on the next slide, that is relative to those balance of contract checks. We run extra payrolls at the end of the year. And then those are provided to our teachers in July and in August. And then also, we see expenditures typically increase a little bit because people receive services in the summertime. Those staff members who don't work in this job all year long. So this shows you our current experience. So if you compare January through June of two thousand fifteen to January through March of two thousand sixteen, and you can see the change in our cash balance. It's on average increased by three million dollars. And most of that, not only did we have that infusion that we, that you authorized, but also we did enter into a new contract back in two thousand, January of two thousand fifteen. That's not right. January two thousand sixteen. And that has resulted in additional discounts for the district. So that has been a very good thing, and we are seeing the, the fruit of that. So we are anticipating at this time that we will not need to make any type of adjustment to our rates or to the addition of any funds into that account. But we continue to monitor this on a monthly basis. And also, we take a look at it quarterly with our providers as well. Does that make sense to everyone? This shows you the estimated cost based on an average monthly expenditure. And again, keeping in mind that four-point-six-million-dollar balance amount. Overall, we would look at expenditures in the current year being approximately twenty-six-point-three million. That could go up significantly or not. We have typically set the budget at twenty-eight million dollars. And when we're talking about funds like this, I didn't mention that on the GoCaps portion of this evening's presentation. But we typically set the budget at offsetting amounts to show that it will wash out, basically. And there are different conversations that can take place relative to whether you budget exactly. But oftentimes, we set it to indicate zero. So twenty-eight million would be what we will likely recommend when we present the budget in June. Okay, that one was much less riveting than the GoCaps part. Any questions?
I don't know if this is a question you can answer, but it occurs to me that when you're saying that you renegotiated some things that ended up being savings. To me, the corresponding question is, and did that result in any reduction in benefits to our staff that they don't appreciate? Because it's not all about saving money. It's about making sure they're adequately-
That is an excellent question. And that, that negotiation was, was without planned design changes. So that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's it.
I will say, my friend Parker, who's not here this evening, is much more knowledgeable about that. So I'll need to step up my game or count on my new friend, Lisa.
Jerry has a question.
Couple of questions on the four-hundred-and-sixty a month that we contribute. That's a hundred percent of the-
That's correct. Our employees do not participate-
There's no employee contribution.
In, in employee contribution for their care.
The four-hundred-and-thirty-six retirees, they're paying four-hundred-and-sixty?
That is correct.
Well, that's the plan for fifty-six hundred. Well, I don't see, it covers fifty-six hundred, but retirees is under the same plan. It's not a separate retiree plan.
They're, they're under our plan, and there's actual, actually a statutory requirement that they're allowed to participate.
Because I know there's some other companies around that have decided to eliminate their retiree plans.
And they, they directly pay their, their funds. We do not handle that. That's handled by MedPay.
I thought that, I didn't think that we did anything with those. But it's the same rate, so it's a good, good retiree plan for, isn't it?
You require nothing of our employees to receive the benefits for them. Like, so some organizations require you to not smoke or to take a wellness check, and then they pay for it. We, we require nothing. Is that right?
That is my understanding, that any participation in our wellness programming is voluntary. And that would be-
Automatic, so to speak.
That would be the carrot versus the stick approach at Healthy Living. And we-
A lot of people are going to the stick.
There's certainly a trend.
There's a trend with the stick, yes.
There's a trend with the stick that I'm aware of. I'm not against the stick, so, just saying.
Certainly, each time we're in that negotiation phase, I mean, that, that is something that we always need to be cognizant of, that that can definitely impact the overall cost to the program. And we want our people to be healthy and make good choices through that.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yes.
We're still using carrots, though, in trying to get them to do the healthy check. And we're doing some things with carrots rather than a stick. And that number has continued to increase with the health checks that we're doing. And they get some benefits based on if they do that.
Right.
And, you know, I'm, as long as that number keeps going up, I maybe am not too concerned about the stick. I don't want to, and you said with the reserve number, I don't want to push that too much, because probably the legislature will take that up and determine what it would be. So I really, you know, that ought to be something that, because I'm not sure there are too many districts that are still self-insured. And so I really don't want them telling us what that ought to be. I think we can make that choice. But to let you know, historically, one of the first times I was on the board, we, we did all of this internally. We, we didn't send out anything. We had our own people process the paperwork and everything. And we had our own, and as a board member, we, as board members, we became aware that some of our physicians were not honoring Springfield Public School people because we hadn't paid our bills. We were, I mean, see, I'm, I'm looking this at a very positive thing, because I've been to where they were taking the money from the next month to pay the bills from the last month. And that's when we went to outsourcing. And, and that was not a, that was not a good time for anybody, for anybody. Because the board had not kept up, or somebody, somebody hadn't said, you need to increase your contributions, because it was a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month. I remember what it was, and had been forever. And then the expenses were going up, and nobody wanted to say, you're going to have to ante up some money. It was not a good time. So when I see these numbers, I mean, I know you would like to see them better. But as somebody that's been there, it was a, I mean, when physicians said, you're Springfield Public Schools, we, we can't take you because you haven't paid your bill from the last two or three months, that was a, that was quite a blow. So we're not there.
Right.
But we'd never want to be there again.
You never want to be there.
I think what you've done to look at the other side of the cost is much better than, the easy answer is, well, the district will just go to five hundred. "Well, the district will just go to $500." Or, you know, that's, that's the easy thing to do and just say, "Well, just keep raising the costs for the district or the other side." But, I think we've done a really, a good job with this Health Benefit Trust to know where we've been to where we are now. But, it can go south in a hurry. That's the thing.
If it's not monitored.
If it's not monitored monthly, it can just, costs can go crazy. And there, I think we've done everything to limit our liability, but it still can happen to us. So, I think the one thing that is really important is, is a huge benefit for our employees. It is huge and I, although some don't want, $5,500 per year?
$5,520 per year.
That's a lot of money that you have to take out of your pocket that, I mean, it's either take it out and get it one way or, you know, don't have it. I, I just, and that's, by the way, added to your retirement toward the end. So, on your salary. So, it's another thing that people don't realize all of a sudden. So, I just, I think you and whoever's keeping up with this, but as a board member, I just know it's important every month to make sure we don't ever get to where we were before because that was an embarrassment for the district and anybody concerned with that for our employees. And it's a, it's a huge positive to me right now. And I don't think if we compare to our, we're always comparing to our regional cohort and the other cohort, we'd be still one of the very few paying 100%.
I do need to provide a clarification for myself. I second guessed the date I had up there, but it was correct. We entered into the new agreement, January 2015, because we took a look at the full year of 2000, the calendar year of 2015 to ascertain if we achieved the discounts that were committed in the contract. And our broker provided assistance through that as well and MedPay too. And at the end, we did have to return part of the discounts because the discounts were rich, more rich than, than what the contract called for. So, that was a good thing. But, I, I want you to understand that while we've finished one full year of a five-year agreement, that doesn't mean we can't change that monthly contribution level to adjust to what we're seeing in our experience on expenditures. So, it's really about, as Mr. Renner indicated, staying in touch with the expenditure experience and, and adjusting accordingly. But, at this point in time, we do not anticipate recommending an increase to our next year contribution level, which would, again, also affect retirement.
Okay, hearing none?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next time, we'll talk about purchase services and supplies. It just doesn't get any better than this.
Can we just do it now?
Oh, but no.
The adrenaline is running.
I know. A little teaser, right there.
If that's what you call it.
I like those things.
Yeah, she's in.
I'm anxious.
I'm especially interested in this.
Okay, then, you've got a lot of people who are excited.
I know. And if you have any particular slant or slice and dice idea in mind that you really hope to see, let me know. One thing that I do plan to do is provide, we'll take a look at purchase services and supplies separately. We'll look and see where are our primary spending areas and we'll focus on, I don't know where we'll draw that line, but we'll focus on the, the primary areas. We might dive into a few items just to talk a little more about that. But, we'll, I'll also provide you with some general information about the accounting code structure and the requirements of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Yay.
Look forward to that.
Right, okay.
She was talking to you on special request.
Okay.
She was talking to you on special request, so, you know, get your Christmas list in.
Okay, we're moving on to 11.01. This is public comments to address non-agenda items. The board welcomes comments from the public regarding non-agenda items. Mrs. Luton, do we have any requests this evening? Okay, we do not, so we'll move on. We'll move right on to report from administration, 12.101 cabinet report.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Mike Dawson to give us update from the chief, not lending, but learning officer. For those of you who were there last night, you'll get it.
Mike Dawson did a fine job as the chief lending officer, I want to congratulate him.
Cover the trust fund.
Trust fund, did a nice job. I just want to bring you a couple of updates tonight from the learning realm. One, we had the great pleasure of hosting Robert Putnam in the city and I want to thank the teachers and the educators and administration who were able to attend and hear his words. My great takeaway there was he kind of talked about this, the opportunity gap and the problem. But, then what levers are we pulling in an organization to help affect that problem? So, I sat there and scratched down some things and I think we're pulling some right levers. So, it was very validating to hear from him that, on that Friday afternoon. One of the levers I would say is Ignite. Ignite is a deployment of its teaching and learning, but it's about kids doing things. It's about creating things and it's about accessing the world. So, Ignite's a great lever that we're pulling right now. I would tell you that getting quality teachers, Mr. McKenna's not here, but the early incentive, that we were able to get to the talent pool so much quicker to bring quality educators into the classroom is a lever that we're pulling to create, to lessen that opportunity gap between our students and the district. You heard it tonight, but Go Caps is another lever. We're putting students, hundreds of students into our community doing apprenticeship-type work and preparing them for real world, which is another piece that we're going to be able to close the gap. I even talked to, I even applaud our team for the facilities master planning because that's really helping us drive where the resources are going to go. So, I think we're pulling the right levers. The other one I would last night highlight is Explore. We're now extending learning opportunities for 44 days throughout the summer. And as of today, we had about 10,500 students enrolled in a Explore with 9,500 in June, 6,500 in July. Today, I asked for the update on pre-kindergarten because that's a big lever that we still need to be talking about in early childhood. And so, we have about 770 pre-kindergarten students registered for Explore. I told Dr. Jungman, my goal would be to get that to 1,000 so that we could have, we graduate about 2,000 students. If we could get half of those students represented in an early childhood experience, that would be outstanding for our school district. I would also tell you that online enrollment, we have about 1,800 students that have enrolled for online. That's doubling efforts from last year. So, I believe, you know, Robert Putnam's conversation about the gap between rich and poor and what are you doing? We're doing some really great things in the school district to help close that gap. We still have some work to do in early childhood education and we still have some work to do in some extracurriculars and how we're going to do that. I asked the, I asked the question, what is an example? Who is helping close that gap for extracurriculars? How are they structured that? And he doesn't really have a great example for us. So, it'll be new work as we go and continue to have that conversation because we want the support, but we also want to make opportunity for our students. So, it'll be, it'll be rough, it'll be tough work, it'll be great conversation, but definitely something we need to continue to do. I also want to applaud the learning support team for putting together our SPS Now, which is our back-to-school teacher professional development. It's two days of totally, at every high school and it's a lot of voice and choice. So, teachers are picking their path to what they need to learn to get better at their craft in the classroom. And that's a big shift. And it's from sit and get, this is the thing we're going to give you, to now you choose your learning path, which is exactly the model we're trying to have for students. You choose your learning path. So, we're trying to model those expectations. They've also put together SPS Summer Academy, which is a deeper dive into curriculum adoption and some other topics so teachers can self-select. One of the offerings will be social studies that we approved earlier at the board table. So, the teachers will get there, we'll have summer learning opportunities throughout all of June and July. Then, kind of connecting to that is that we've started the induction program for the new hires. We have about 57 new hires in the, in the pool. 52 of them have already indicated and I think they're coming in May 18th. So, we're going to get them in the system faster than they can, they can be participants in Summer Academy and SPS Now. So, we're in, bringing them into speed over 60 days over the summer before they ever hit the classroom. So, very excited. That's a, that's a collaborative effort between blended learning, professional learning, learning supports, those departments coming together and crafting something for our, meet the needs of our teachers. Just a couple of other ones I would tell you about is, earlier in the month, we hosted documentary film, Most Likely to Succeed. Thank God for Bruce Douglas because he got it actually to run. But, it was a good discussion, I thought, from our folks. The great takeaway from talking with people, talking to a principal today was, "I need my kids doing something every day, I need them creating something every day and I need us to be really zoning in on showcasing exhibitions to what, getting to authentic audience in front of our students." So, and speaking of that, we have our Go Caps and our Health Science Academy will be doing capstone projects next week in front of authentic audiences. So, if you're available and if you need those dates, we can get them to you, but we'd love for you to stop by and see what those students have produced and what they'd like to share. So, I think that was a good film. I want to thank the 50 or so educators who also came. We also hosted it within the region. We invited all of our Go CSD partners to that also. Two more, one is our Missouri Learning Standards were adopted by the State Board of Education. So, those are now approved and we'll have all of next year as an implementation year. That's '16 and '17. Then, '17, '18 would be the first testing year of that. According to the Bill 1490, the testing year wouldn't actually have an impact on our APR for a couple of years after that. So, it's still, the APR is still, what we're doing on strategic planning on internal measures is probably going to be more effective than what we're going to get from the APR report over the next few years. So, and Jerry, I know you serve and get that information too, so I think that's pretty accurate for APR. And then lastly, I just want to thank our Analytics Accountability and Assessment Department. As of today, they have deployed over 22,000 online testing sessions for MAP. So, that's, we still have, we have to get to 67,000 before the end of the window. So, we're about a third of the way there and I just want to thank them. We've had very few hiccups. They are out. It's a service attitude. They're out making eye contact with principals. "You need anything, where are we at, what can we do to help you?" So, I really am thankful for that team, problem-solving and being that service-centered. And then today, we hosted ACT testing for 1,600 juniors in the system. So, that just is that high-stakes testing season that we're in. So, I couldn't do it without that great team who's deploying every day. So, that's my update for you today.
It's Ember.
The lending guy knows so much about learning, that's very comforting to me. I would like to provide an update with regard to operations in that we received two bids on our food service management RFP that was provided. One is from Airmark, the other is from Southwest Foods. And the evaluation committee comprised of both instructional and operational leaders is meeting to review those proposals this week and a recommendation will be coming forward at the May meeting with regard to that food service management. We received over 50 applications for the director of facilities position and we have a first round of interviews scheduled and a committee will be going through that screening process for us. And as you can imagine, there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes to plan for summer cleaning and also plan for painting and also the capital projects work that we've discussed at previous meetings. And at the same time, we are working toward implementing that synergistic program. So, I really want to especially put out there that we have two positions posted. They're for energy specialist positions, but people do not need to have knowledge of energy or HVAC systems or any of that type of information, actually looking for people who are willing to work odd hours, all days, all nights, but a full-time job and someone who's highly energetic and a great communicator. So, oftentimes, these positions will be filled in other districts by retired teachers or other employees and they will be employees of synergistic, not of Springfield Public Schools, but we have participated in promoting those, those two positions. Also, the facility master plan work obviously continues and the building assessments are wrapping up. We're still providing some additional data and demographic work is taking place at this time. We do have our public engagement meeting scheduled and we've talked about those before. We have a website specially designed by the Communications Department that provides all the information about what's going on behind the scenes for facility master planning. But, know that next week, those meetings will take place. And we have, three of those meetings are certainly open to all public. We have a couple of the meetings that have some designated attendees. But, on April 26th at 7:00 PM at Reed Academy, you and anyone listening is invited to attend that public session to provide feedback on the facility master plan. April 27th at 10:00 AM, right in this room, we'll have another public session meeting and we invite any of our patrons to join us for that. And then also, on April 28th at 6:00 PM, Cherokee Middle School will host a public engagement opportunity on facility master planning. So, we'll continue to keep you informed on the progress of that work. Finance team is working diligently behind the scenes in developing that next year budget, which includes scrubbing this year's budget. And I appreciate all the efforts of all of those people aside from continuing to pay our vendors and most importantly, continue to pay our employees every month. That's important work as well. So, that concludes my update.
Last couple of things for me and then if you have any questions for the team. Graduation, obviously, right around the corner. So, hopefully, you've got your information. You know which one you will be attending or all of them if you would like. We'd love to have you. But, May 5 and 6 at JQH, we will also have a big community event. If you're not aware, on May 7th, it's Convoy of Hope. Event will be held at the fairgrounds. While it's not sponsored by the district, we're certainly supporting and trying to help our students and families get connected. A lot of resources will be available at that event and I would encourage you and all others to volunteer. I think it'll be a good day of community support for, for our students and our families. Any quest, before I go into legislative, because that's a little deeper dive tonight, any questions for Carol, Mike and myself regarding there?
Let me ask Quinn, Mike said that new teachers would be here May 18th. They're under contract, but they're not getting paid yet, are they?
No, that's one of their, it's one of their days. They have to come for new teacher induction. It used to be the four days in August. We've just given them some options, so it is kind of a contracted day.
Part of their contract, but they don't get paid until then. They can choose which day they want to do it, whether they want to do it May or later, so.
Well, I'll ask that, that's not pertinent now, but I just.
Great. Jill?
Dr. Dawson, I think you said there were 57 new hires, is that right?
57 in the first pool.
In the first pool. Do you know how many of them are brand-new teachers right out of school versus some who are coming from other teaching opportunities?
I don't have the breakdown at this point, but I can find out for you. Parker, can you give me that? I'll find it.
I could text him right now.
I'll FaceTime him and we'll see if he can answer.
All right, I'll move to legislative. Quick update on the legislative front. We're four weeks out from the closing of the session, so this is when it starts heating up. You know, the pace gets fast and furious. Actually, I'll be heading up tonight after our meeting. We have a 7 o'clock Metro Partnership Breakfast with other Springfield organizations in the morning. And then we'll be hitting the halls. And actually, there is a hearing in the Senate on the early childhood bill that we've been supporting for years. So, I plan to testify as well as several other community members. So, it'll be a big day at the Capitol tomorrow. Some of the most important things, budget. Obviously, you've seen the Senate got their budget through, basically aligned to the House budget for K-12 of about $70 million in the formula. There are still some discrepancies of different funnels of how that money's going to come in. But, overall, we're, we feel good about that number. We'd like for it to be a little bit higher, but we'll see if anything happens in conference. Conference was supposed to be yesterday, but I have not heard the results of conference at this point. So, they, they have to wrap it up very soon to make sure that they have the ability to address any issues if there are withholdings. So, they have to get that done fairly quick if they want to stay with that plan. Other major bills that you see, you get your MSBA Friday updates that kind of give you those bills that are moving. But, some major conversation around dyslexia, a task force regarding that issue, potentially screening. We're trying to stay engaged in that conversation, support, looking at how we support students, but also trying to make sure there's a feasible approach that districts can withstand. So, we want that to be a really well-educated bill and we're helping try to make that better. MSBA, Massa, other organizations, I know. There are a couple omnibus bills that are beginning to take shape, 1611 on the House side. So, we'll see it begin to package around all the little items that are. to package around all the little items, uh, that, uh, are, uh, made its way through committee, made their way through the floor. They'll start to package up. And then on the Senate, I think it's, uh, six thirty-eight will be the omnibus bill. So, we'll monitor those. Uh, you have to be careful in those, because you can get some bad little things that make the other, uh, things hard to swallow. So, uh, we'll, we'll continue to monitor those two bills. The other big ones for us are, uh, the finance bills around the formula, HB nineteen forty-three, which is the formula, uh, adjustment bill on the House, and Senate Bill five eighty-six, which is just Lawson's similar bill that brings the cost of the formula down, uh, by putting the cap back in. That was part of the original formula, uh, which we've talked about, makes the f- formula less expensive, but it also makes it more sustainable, and something that we think, uh, would be a good thing in the long run for our formula, because it's good, it's a good formula for our district and other Southwest Missouri districts, for sure. We don't want to see it get so far out of, uh, whack that we, uh, go back to the drawing board on a formula. So, uh, we support five eighty-six, uh, for the most part, support everything in nineteen forty-three as a part of that. One of the things I would tell you, Lincoln Huff, uh, supported us and helped, uh, add an amendment to nineteen forty-three. They had, uh, tried to cap summer school hours at a hundred and eighty hours, uh, because there is no current cap for summer school, uh, it just to control formula growth. And, uh, Lincoln, uh, offered amendment to take that up to two hundred and forty hours, which more fully, uh, and captures what our summer school program will be for some students. Uh, so, and that amendment did pass. Now, it's still got to make its way through the Senate side, and, uh, then to the, uh, governor's, uh, uh, table and be either voted, or, uh, approved, or vetoed, and then considered. But we appreci- appreciate Lincoln taking that up for us and making it a better bill for us. The other thing on the legislative side is continue to stay tuned to ESSA rulemaking at federal level, uh, negotiated rulemaking. So, they passed the law, and then they get a group of people in the, in the room to try to figure out what that law means and how we're going to enforce it. Uh, it's been a little sloppy at this point. If you've seen Senator Alexander come out, who's the author of the bill, or the founder, basically, of some of those things, really, uh, going after the department pretty heavy for some of their regula- regulatory recommendations. So, stay tuned. It, it will continue to be a little bit of a battle, battle at the federal level. So, we stay engaged, uh, with that, with our lobbyists, uh, at the NSBA and AAAS level are highly engaged in that work. So, those are the big pieces of legislation. Any questions? It will get busy, so stay tuned for the next four weeks, so, and it will shift and turn quickly, so.
One of the advantages of our MSBA affiliation is that we do get those, um, legislative updates on a regular basis, which are very informative.
Okay, moving on to, uh, thirteen point oh-one, Board Comments. And I'll just start by, um, just mention that our Teacher Appreciation Bagewin was last night. It was a very special evening, uh, especially with the introduction of, um, a new recognition, and that will be awarded each year, and that's the teacher, the Rookie Teacher of the Year in memory of Melanie McGee at Disney, our teacher at Disney that, uh, was killed earlier this year in a car accident. But, anyway, that was, uh, an amazing, uh, presentation. The Disney Dynamics sang, which one of our board members' daughters is a part of that. Um, so it was a very, very memorable, a very touching, um, Teacher Appreciation Bagewin. I think I've been attending those, uh, longer than I want to admit, but it was a terrific evening. Uh, and you guys may have some things, you were the first one, some things that you might want to mention about that. But, um, before we, we, we go, we move on, um, four members of the Board attended the National School Board Association Conference the weekend of March nine through eleven. And, in addition to several keynote speakers that we had the opportunity to hear at NSBA, there were numerous one-and-a-half to two-hour sessions, uh, throughout the three days, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. So, we all went in different directions to see as many presentations, um, as we could work in to those days. Um, and so I have asked each of the Board members that attended, uh, and we'll ask Dr. Youngman to chime in on, I know we could talk about this for a long time, because I have two pages of notes, but I won't go over all of them. But, I will just ask for highlights. Something specifically that resonated with you, a highlight from something you learned at, because that's a part of our professional learning, and we attend our conferences. So, something that was especially, um, uh, meaningful to you, and especially what's going on in our district. So, since you're on the end, Bruce, I'm sorry. I always go to you, but I know you're ready.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready. The, um, the one I think I'll highlight was, uh, was do superintendents and boards have an effect on high achievement? As a short meeting, the answer was no. So, that doesn't. No, just kidding. Just kidding. Just kidding. Yeah. No, I, I think the, I mean, the research was, it was out of Montana and State of Washington, and the research on how they got their data was a little boring, uh, but, I mean, that was part of the presentation. But to me, it really came down to the fact and understanding it came out of Montana mainly. There aren't too many big cities in Montana and the things that happen there. But it was really the, the fact that, yes, they can have, and their research based on what they did with students and then boards to get that correlation was interesting. But it really, they had, um, just kind of rectangular boxes, and they started with the community, then the Board of Education, superintendent, and then obviously, that's why it wasn't big districts. Goes next was superintendent, then principal, and there wasn't anything in between there. And then students, I mean, then teachers, then students. And their whole point was, if these boxes need to be touching, but if they're not touching, then probably achievement's not going to happen. And any of, if any of them are congruent, and somebody's not doing their job, and somebody else is doing, trying to do their job, it isn't going to happen either. Their research would show that each of those areas have their job to do, and they need to touch each other, but they can't let somebody else do them, or you can't have a wide gap in between, because then it, it all stops. And so, it was, um, um, the, then toward the end, they were promoting their book. So, that kind of, or no, they're, the chapter in a book. Sorry. They got, they only got a chapter in a book. But it, it was, um, I thought, an interesting study, and the research was, was there, and how they ended up determining, yes, we can have, or there are a lot, there seemed to be a number of districts that, uh, the, their conclusion was districts don't have high achievement if that isn't happening. There isn't any way that you can have high achievement if you have areas that don't do their job. It just, it, it won't happen, because everybody's got a job to do, and everybody doing their job, uh, ends up with high achievement. And if, you can't just have a group of students without good teachers doing their job, and all of a sudden, high achievement, or, uh, s- superintendents and boards not doing it, it's just not going to happen, because we have to make sure there's direction and resources and all the other things. So, it, it was, um, one of the best sessions I attended.
Tim?
Um, I'll re- report more just kind of general themes I walked away with. Uh, and it, uh, a year ago, when I went to NSBA, I was probably looking more for, I, I, I was looking for innovation, and, uh, wanting to know how innovation works in a school district. This year, I followed up, and I learned quite a bit last year, but this year, I followed up and, uh, attended several, uh, presentations on innovation and, uh, ways. I, I tried to, I tried to find, uh, seminars that kind of spoke to the engaging, relevant, and personal, uh, notion of, of, uh, of reaching learners. What was interesting was, a year ago, I learned of some things that we should be doing. This year, in the innovation seminars I went into, I had affirmation on things that we are doing. And I think anytime you go to these kind of meetings, that's either what you're looking for. You're looking to come away with one good idea, at least, or one good af- affirmation, at least. And I think that what we are doing, then, may be cutting-edge for Springfield, and it is, because we're going through some enormous changes as a district. And because it's cutting-edge and new for us, it's painful at times. But what we are doing, what we are doing is also right on the curve of positive change happening nationally, and being advocated nationally. Um, and because I heard that over and over, I thought, well, this is difficult work, but we have to trust that we're on the right track, because we're not doing it alone. And I didn't hear anything, I, I, I didn't hear anything that we were doing that I didn't, let me put this right way. I didn't, everything that we were doing, I heard something about it up there. It, it wasn't, uh, it, it wasn't where, whoa, you know, I'm really nervous about this one thing that, that Springfield Public Schools is doing. And it, it, and no affirmation. Everything we were doing was affirmed, uh, more than once. Then on the total opposite end of the spectrum, I went away with hearing from several, uh, speakers that no matter what kind of innovation you have, no matter what kind of technology you have, no matter what kind of programs you have, ultimately, what matters most is the relationship between the teacher and the learner. And no matter what we do, it ultimately comes down to that relationship. It's not a transaction, it's a relationship between the teacher and the learner. And I'm so grateful that the teachers that I meet in this district all are entirely aware of that significant element. And I can speak not as a teacher, but as a learner, that the teachers who meant the most, that I, that, that I remember the most, had the greatest impact on me, are the ones who had a relationship with me, or, or that I was able to have a relationship with them. That's it.
Okay, so I'm next. So, first of all, uh, I'm going to go more conceptually as well. I found it fascinating to be in a place with thirty-five thousand other people who do our work, right? Because this is a fairly small half-moon, and there were thirty-five thousand other people who do our work in a variety of different ways, but it's the same work. So, I thought that was interesting. Um, the, and you could go to anything. Because it was that huge, there was this mortgage board of, of, um, opportunities to learn about. And so, the three things that, that I will say, uh, that I focused, or that I got something out of, with the overarching theme that I agree with Tim, I felt, uh, validated, gratified, like, oh, we've got that going on. So, I, I felt good about that. It wasn't like they had all this innovation and we hadn't, it hadn't occurred to us. So, that was good. Uh, I went to a session on ESSA, and, um, as I often am when I go to legislative initiative, concept things, I'm like, what an interesting way to do that. Um, and I will be honest, I walked away fairly confused, although I think that, that means I was paying good attention and learned what there was to learn, because wow, that is an interesting way to set an agenda. Uh, we'll figure out the majority of what's important about it later. I, I'm confused by that. But I feel like I was paying attention and learned something that we were scratching our heads. Um, I am a big fan of project-based learning, so every time I went to a session that talked about how important that is, and how gratifying that is for teachers and students, and it's, uh, I think a best practice. I listened attentively to that. I went to a session that I appreciated, because I am a huge proponent of technology and the initiatives that we have there, but this, the focus of this presentation was that you really have to focus on using technology as a tool, not a learning substitute. And, um, I, I feel like we've got that going on, but I think we have to be really, keep that in mind. So, for me, I, I really appreciated that session. Um, I, I only, all right, I had something about teacher appreciation, but it's not time to talk about that. So, that was my overview. And the only other thing I want to say is that Bruce's granddaughter is a Dynamics member also.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we were well represented there.
Excellent. Okay.
I am.
Okay. Uh, and I'm going to kind of piggyback on what Tim said and some what Jill said, but, um, I walked into a session that was from a small district, uh, forty-five hundred, and they immediately started talking about their, um, their title was Relationships Matter, and how you can build assets, reduce risks, and help all students in your school succeed. And they started immediately talking about a change in thinking, and how they, uh, the teachers and the staff, support staff, the ministers, the, the change in thinking and how they deal with students. And I think as a former teacher, that resonated with me, because they posed this question that, several years ago in their district, if you would ask, which was the way it was when I was teaching, why is Bob failing? And the response would have been, Bob missed ten days of the last three weeks, Bob did not turn in his last five assignments, Bob failed the last two exams, and that would be the thinking in response to why is Bob failing. And with the work that they're doing in this small district, yet, they were listed in one, as, um, two-hundred-and-ninetieth in the top fifteen-hundred districts in the, in the country. But their change in thinking was now the response to that question, if you asked their teachers, would be, Bob is failing because, and they just sum just random examples, his grandmother passed away recently, which led to his mother and siblings finding a new place to live, Bob's mother has had a relapse with her illness, um, Bob is responsible for caring for two younger siblings. And so, that's the answer when you approach student, um, learning challenges from a more relationship-based, um, standpoint. And I, I, I think that immediately got my attention, that, that is that change in thinking, and not that you are not still very concerned about Bob's stu- and his assignments and attending class and getting the information, but it's a, it's a change in thinking about why Bob might be failing. And there was a, a, a really good presentation about building relationships. So, I left that, and I thought, okay, well, you can do that in a small district, and that works. And I walked into my next session, which was Ithaca, New York, eighty-thousand students, and they started talking about the changes in some of their schools that they brought about by that same thinking, which they started out with, well, first of all, they realized that you cannot walk into a classroom, it can't be your parents' classroom, it can't look like your classroom, and I realized it certainly can't look like my classroom, whenever I left the classroom a number of years ago. Um, and they talked about that they made a major push to involve every student in some extracurricular activity, whether it was sports, whether it was, uh, clubs, and they also made a real push to get an instrument in the hand of every student in their district. And by doing that, they were able to extend the school day via student activities, not so much requiring additional number of hours, but, and then they were able to monitor student engagement by looking at the number of students that were enrolled in extracurricular. So, what I liked was the changes they were bringing in, the close monitor, the how they were monitoring, uh, how that was working. They also talked about, um, they don't buy traditional desks and chairs in that district anymore. Everything is rideable. The desks are rideable, the walls are rideable. They purchase standing desks. Um, they gave the example of a state senator visit, because this school, this particular school, that was a principal and the superintendent and the board president, has increased their academic achievement and their graduation rates so significantly, they had a state senator visited their building and walked around and came back, and his first comment to the principal was, I can't find teachers in the classroom. And that's because the teachers are on the floor, or at the table, or standing in a group, with, working with the students on project-based learning. Um, and the amazing thing is that their student reading, uh, seventy percent proficiency, and these are very difficult neighborhoods, very difficult, um, challenging high schools. They, um, their AP honors enrollment's up by eleven percent, because they, eighty-eight percent of their students take AP, because they took down barriers, the prerequisites for minority students. Uh, and they are doing so much better, uh, certainly better than sitting in a low-level remedial class, because they're challenging them and engaging them. Um, their graduation was seventy-two percent, it's now ninety-four. I'm not just going on and on about this particular district, but it's just the change they made. And, and again, so gratifying and validating. I'm a lifelong educator to see that we are on track in Springfield Public Schools. And not only are we on track, we might be at the head of the pack, just a little bit on some things, because there were some districts that they're moving in that direction. And I know we have done this rapidly, and it's hard, and I think of myself in the classroom and all these changes that are taking place. But it validated for me at this conference. These were just two particular. These were just two particular sessions I went to, but many others validate it over and over and over. This is what we have to do to meet the needs of kids in the 21st century. So it was an extremely valuable conference. I did sit through the ESSA conference, and I learned what ESSA is like, know what you left behind, and how it's different. So there's some very big differences, but they still have some things to work out, as you know on that. But anyway, so I was extremely impressed with the change in thinking, as well as the change in what our classrooms look like. And, oh, one last thing, was if you walked into a classroom a couple of years ago, what you would see as disruption now is engagement. It now looks like engagement. And that's that change in thinking and change in structure. So, that's my little piece. Great conference. John?
Awesome. I'll just make a couple additional comments, and had a great time learning from a lot of districts. The only thing I regret is that, you know, keynotes are typically good, but the order of the keynotes was poor this year. They closed with the most powerful keynote, and unfortunately, at closing, half the audience was gone. The other two were motivational, but this one was Tony Wagner. And if you've been in education very long, you know some of his books and his study of innovation, and how do you create, you know, a purposeful classroom and environment. He's actually the author of Most Likely to Succeed, not the movie, but a book that goes along with the movie that's just come out. And he ended with a great keynote, and some of the things that I took out of it, and I was jotting notes as quickly as I possibly could. But one of his, my favorite phrase was, content knowledge matters. It matters, we can't forget about it. Skills matter more, as we think about what we hear from our employers every day, it's not just content's not enough, skills matter more. So we've got to make sure that they're going out with those four Cs, that collaboration, critical thinking. But what matters most is motivation. So students leaving here motivated and having a path forward and inspired to continue to be learners. And the words that he continued to bring up in that context were play, passion, and purpose. You create classrooms and learning environments with play, passion, and purpose, and that's only done through great relationships. So it really reaffirmed this engaging, relevant, personal mission that we've developed, I thought. And he closed with these five things that schools should be doing, and I thought it really echoed some work going on in our system. So affirmation for us, I thought. Number one was engage community, our adults in conversations about the outcomes we need for our students, okay? What's going to help them be successful tomorrow? And that's when he really hit on that content concept versus skills and motivation. So having those kids leave here with those things in mind. Number two, reimagine what schools can look like, have the courage to think differently about design, and really focus on the competencies, not just coverage, in order to make that happen. Number three was create an innovation fund that teachers can apply to to spur innovation and research in our systems. What an awful concept, but it really is, put it in the hands of the experts and give them the freedom to take risk, right? And try new things, and that will drive and spur new learning in your classrooms. Number four, provide students meaningful access to their future, a variety of experiences that align with their future opportunities. And I think CTE, I think CAPS, I think KPU, I think Quest, I think, all of those things are relevant opportunities to align to your futures and let students experience multiple things. And then the last one, let students be the architects of their own learning more often. And that's just a deeper ownership of the process. And talked about how to capture that performance and exhibitions of student learning. So five powerful things that really were the last moments of the conference and affirmed a lot of the work that we have going on. Also, sat through a great session from Ruby Payne that Jill missed in the book somehow. I can't believe she missed Ruby Payne.
I have no idea why you were mentioning that here and now.
She was a tad bit bitter, but she said, how did I miss Ruby Payne in the book? It's a big book with a lot of sessions. But she had a great session, and it went in a different direction. It was about how to support, then some of her sessions, how to support the growth of the parents in neighborhoods and some specific programs that her and her team are working on. So, continue to learn.
Braggard.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sure you can all tell that it was a great conference and one in which it was truly a lot of professional learning going on, so. Okay. And those that were not able to go, anything, we have our two new board members, I don't know if you've been able to attend anything that you want to make a comment or been out and about, but this is a time whenever you have the option of doing that.
I had the interesting experience of attending virtually the event last night, because I taught myself, and just sort of living that experience through Twitter in particular, I was moved deeply by Twitter. I can only imagine.
Tim's going to take a drink of water. There was a lot of crying amongst some of us, me.
Thank you. Okay. All right, good. Then we will move on. Upcoming meetings, those.
You told us we could comment about the event last night, and I wanted to say something. Does everyone remember that I complained about the parking?
Uh, no.
There was a lovely woman standing out there who told us to redirect and leave a different way, and we got out of there last night in easily half the time as last year, and I felt like I should tell you all, that in addition to it being a really moving event, and tear-filled, and then just so joyous in terms of the celebration of the Teacher of the Year. This lovely woman helped us find the back way out, and that was sweet. That's what I wanted to say.
I think the foundation provided, I know there were a greeter at the door whenever we came in directing us into the, right, so I think they probably provided, hopefully they provided that person. Good, Jill?
I felt like I should share.
Yeah, okay. And we talk about our upcoming meetings, 13.02, I think we've already mentioned some, but our May study session, our study session for May is May 3. We have, again, Carol mentioned the community feedback meetings for our facilities, and that is really important, and extremely important. And I know I'm going to try to make one of them, and I would encourage you, and tell everyone you know that is interested in what this is going to look like, please.
And I hope we can try to make sure we're represented at each, rather than us all loading up, so I'm letting you all know, I'm going to try to make that April 27 one. But if we need, like, so we're not loaded up, did you, so I picked first?
Then, at 10 o'clock?
That's closest to where I work. Yeah, I could try to do the Cherokee one, but I think I have something else that night.
I can do the Cherokee one.
Okay. So, you might just kind of let Jill and I know which one you're going to, and then that way, there's one I was planning to go to, I'll try to get to a different one. So those are on the 26th and 27th, is that correct?
And 28th.
And 28th, okay. Then, more learning for the board. MSBA regional meeting is April 26 in Branson, and so I think a majority of the board will be attending that, so we get more learning.
We need to win the attendance award sometime on that.
April 26, it's next Tuesday.
We have enough registered to win this year.
Do we?
Oh, thank, yes.
I thought you were talking about.
We have never won it.
We have never won it.
We have never won.
This should be the year.
New year.
Great to bring home a scholar.
I'm about, I'm.
In a van.
We haven't even won it in our own location.
Yes, are we leaving at 5:00?
We had it in Springfield, we didn't win it.
Yeah, I have it down.
Okay. So, any other upcoming meetings? Because I'm sure I've missed any other upcoming meetings that, John, that I need to mention.
I want to note that, I realize this is somewhat out in the distance, but on May 20, I was advised today, on May 20, there is an NAACP Freedom Fund Award Banquet that will have a direct connection to the work we're doing here.
Great.
And always, NAACP always has, at the very least, a strong indirect connection to the work that we do here.
And we will all get that, is that on our calendar?
We got an email.
Just got, okay. Excellent. Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to our agenda item 14.01, our plus delta. And for our new board members, this is a time where we get a post-it, and we write something that especially worked for us this evening. I have mine ready to go, my plus. And then if there's something you think we could improve, or you want us to think about, because we get those, and they're important as well as not just our agenda, but our facilities as well. So, get that ready to go, and then before we leave this evening, please post that on the board. So at this time, we'll move on to 15.01, vote to go into executive session. The board will meet in executive session following this meeting to discuss real estate and collective bargaining issues as provided in sections 601-0212 and 9 RSMO. So at this time, I need a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you. Alina Leonard, a motion, do we have a second? And Bruce Renner? And at this time, we do need to vote, so note your screen, you should have a little pop-up to cast our vote. Motion carries. We will, at this time, meet in executive session. I mean, we are adjourned.